I'd like to start the meeting with all, everyone, please rise for salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the law. To the republic.
Please be seated. Welcome every one township of Volbridge Zoning Board of Adjustment, regular meeting, February 20, 2025. Adequate notice that this meeting of the Volbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. At least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location and the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and also posting the agenda on the municipal website. We have a roll call, please, Ms. Porcelli.
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde? Absent. Mr. Singh? Ms. Gomez? Absent. Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Just as a couple of housekeeping items, the meeting is simultaneously being broadcast on CATV, Channel fifteen here in the township, as well as YouTube Live. If you ever wanted to see the meeting again for any reason, you could look that up on YouTube probably in the next few days when they post it. I would ask everyone here in the room to please silence your cell phones, so those that may be testifying in deference to them, we don't want to interrupt that, and I'm sure everyone has one, so please do so. Tonight, we have minutes on our Agenda First Board, and they would be the minutes of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to look at them. Absent any comments, I would ask someone to move them for adoption, please.
Chevalier, I'll move in.
Second, Scogno.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. All right, I ask Mr. Dust if you'd please swear in Dan Hollahan or zoning officer.
Sure.
We'll move on to our applications. We're going to take them in order. You're sitting here in the room, fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four Z, Raykill Bello. It's a R five medium high-density zone, that's block one oh six nine lot six oh point one one. The physical location's five nine Rosewood Drive. This is an applicant seeking to propose a shed fourteen inches from the side property line where three foot minimum is required. It's going to require C variance. Is someone here for that matter? Ma'am, please come up. Are you going to be the only one testifying this evening? Are you Raquel? Okay, board attorney's going to swear you in, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, so I hope you got it? Give us your full name, spell your last.
Yes, if you would, do me a favor and put, there's a button on there on the front of the microphone, yep, push it and it should turn green around, there you go. It's a directional mic, so when you, you can be seated, and you can speak right into it, okay, so we'll pick that up. You did spell your last name for us, right?
No, not yet. B as in boy, E L as in Larry, O as in octopus.
We know that you have applied for variance from the board. You're not representing anybody, any, do you have any other pieces of evidence that you may want to show as pictures or anything?
No, I didn't think I had.
All right, what I'm going to ask you to do simply is do the who, what, why, where, and how routine.
Okay.
The board just wants to hear why, why do you need this? What happened? What brought you here tonight? We may have some questions of you, you may have some questions from us. We're going to ask our zoning officer next why you're here. He'll inform the board as to the ordinance. The final thing that I have to do is I have to open up a public portion, so I would poll the audience if anyone wanted to speak on this matter. Once we close that, I go back to you. You may have some final last words, or we may have some final last words, and then I'm going to ask you if you want to take a vote. If for some reason something goes wrong during the application that you don't feel you've provided enough evidentiary commentary on the record, you're entitled to a continuance. So I just want you to keep that in mind. I'm not saying, I don't know how it's going to go.
I'd like this to end today.
I'm on one vote, that's all. But I just warn you that you still have the opportunity to not take a vote tonight if you feel it may not be in your favor, okay? So you can start at your own pace and your own words. We're all homeowners here in the township, just like you are. So we're simply volunteers, we're willing to listen to why you're here. The gentleman to my right is the attorney. Obviously, he has to be here in order to keep us out of trouble, okay? Go right ahead.
So it started a couple of years ago with my neighbor. We were friends before then, and then one night he left his dogs in the house, and it was pretty late, and shot him a text, was like, hey, your dog is, it's one in the morning, your dog's kind of causing a ruckus, and he sent a really nasty response back, and then the next day he got into an argument with my husband, and it just started with a lot of harassment, a lot of police were called, and like we have a whole history of all of that. So we went from being good friends and good neighbors to, oh, wow, you're kind of crazy. We did court, court said, hey, just keep away from each other, don't talk to each other. I was like, okay, fine, no problem. Then he, I run a business for my home, I have a bakery. He called Middlesex County to come to my house and check on my cottage license, and then the next day was the zoning board to check on my new shed, which, by the way, he helped install the sheetrock in the shed and the, like, I had it finished so that I can put all my bakery stuff in there, and he helped with that, and I paid him for it.
Let me just say something to you. There's probably a little bit more that you're telling us than you need to at this point.
Yeah, I just wanted to know where it's coming from.
We're here to just to hear something about the shed, the distance, the setbacks.
It's about a foot and a half.
Those other issues, I'm not saying that they're unimportant, but I really don't want you to put things on the record that don't belong on the record.
That's fair.
Okay?
That's fair. I just wanted you to know why it's being, why he decided to complain, essentially. But that's fine, we can go back to, the shed is about a foot and a half closer to the fence than it should be. When they installed it, I didn't measure, I, you know, the poor guys were out there with these PVC pipes installing this pretty heavy shed, and I was like, it's down, it's good, you guys look tired, it's a hot day, go home, you know? And then it was almost a year later that you guys came out and were like, hey, it's not close, it's not, it's too close to the.
So you were unfamiliar with the setbacks, I'm sure.
I didn't pull out a tape measure when.
I'm saying, you were unfamiliar with it, right?
Yeah, like, I filed for.
You didn't, you didn't put the, install it, someone installed it for you?
Yeah, yeah.
And how long ago was that?
I want to say it's been two years now.
Two years?
Yeah, maybe a year, I don't know. I've had several concussions, so my memory's a little off, sorry.
So we know that it's slightly too close to where.
About a foot and a half too close.
All right. Let me talk to the zoning officer, we'll see what happens, right? Mr. Hollahan.
Thank you, Chairman.
Just chill, got it.
Yeah, so Ms. Bello, she had originally filed for a zoning permit application back on March ninth of twenty twenty-three to install a twelve by ten shed, not dictated on the survey, but it's along the right side property line. It's about parallel with the rear building line of the house. When she had proposed the application, it was proposed at three feet from the property line, which is consistent with the ordinance, so a zoning permit was issued. Like she had said, it was born of a complaint from a neighbor that the shed may have been installed too close to the property line, so a code enforcement inspection was done, an N of the was issued because of the placement of the shed wasn't consistent with what the zoning permit that issued was. So come to find out, the shed was placed about fourteen inches from the property line where the three feet is required, so that's why Ms. Bello's here tonight, seeking that variance approval for the fourteen inches where three feet is required.
We're talking about a difference of twenty-two inches, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Board members, any questions on my left?
I'm sorry, was there a permit taken out?
Yes.
A permit?
Yes.
Yeah, and who installed it, a contractor?
The shed company.
Shed company?
I bought the shed from Home Depot and.
And the shed company reviewed the permit?
I don't know.
They should know the distance would, I think, I believe it says it on the permit, is that not correct?
Yes.
Possibly.
So they installed it?
They installed it, yeah.
And what about the runoff if it rains? Would it go into your neighbor's yard?
No, there's enough there, and there's also a ditch in front of the fence that all the rain goes into.
Yeah, but it would cause flooding, you think?
No, no, because my husband installed a concrete patio, and it's pitched towards the backyard. He does pavers and road building in.
My concern is that you actually took out a permit, which you were correctly doing.
I think the shed company is the one who took out the permit, so I didn't see it until this complaint came up.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on my left?
Your fence?
Yes.
Between you and your neighbor?
Yes.
Is the shed higher than the fence?
It is.
Enough where that could be a complaint?
I.
Or it's a normal?
It's a normal shed, yeah, it's not, you know, an eyesore or anything.
That's the word.
Yeah, is that the word you were looking for? Yeah.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, what's the exact size of your chest, your shed?
Do you know the dimensions?
Right, it's an eight by, I want to say, I can ask my husband?
Eight by ten? Mr. Hollahan, do you know?
Sorry, I didn't know you were going to ask all these questions.
The permit was for a twelve by ten.
Twelve by ten, okay.
Yes.
Exactly.
Anything else?
No.
I have nothing. Ms. Andrews?
Yes, was there a shed there before?
There was not, no.
All right, anything else you want to tell us? Counselor?
Is there, is it on a concrete slab or?
It is.
It is? And is it like affixed into the concrete or?
No, it's not.
Just resting on top of it?
Correct.
And what, what do you keep in the shed?
My bake, my baking items, so I run a business for my home, so all of the extras for the business, so boxes, wrapping things, packaging goods.
Home items you have in there, correct?
Yeah.
Is it hooked up at all to electric or getting out of it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And no water, I would assume?
No.
And it's not going to be, right?
No.
All right, anything?
I'm sorry. If you're looking at, which side is the shed on?
It is on the right-hand side where the driveway is.
On the driveway side?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else you want to tell us at this point?
No, I just would like this to be over with.
I do have to go to a public portion, I'm going to open that now, we'll see if anybody has any comments.
Sure.
This is matter fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four Z, the physical location's five nine Rosewood Drive, this is for a setback on a shed. Three foot required, we're minus, we're twenty-two inches off because it's only fourteen. Anyone here in the room this evening who want to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand or come forward. I think I've given ample time, no one has, I'll close the public portion. Final comments?
No.
Board, any comments before I ask, I'm going to ask you if you want to call, you're going to call for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, any final comments, board? None? None? Okay, away we go. This is for.
I think he said.
Go, go ahead.
How difficult would it be for you to remove the concrete slab and the shed?
Difficult enough that I chose the more expensive option.
Thank you.
So it would certainly be a hardship.
Yes. And I just, I just wanted to be clear that the person that did make the complaint did help install the sheetrock in the shed, so he knew where it was placed when we were still friendly, so.
Counselor C one or C two?
This would be a C two.
Okay. Board C two? Someone want to move it? For or against?
Chevalier, move it against.
Second, Scogno.
Roll call for against. The yes would be meaning no, not no approval.
Correct. Mrs. Andrews?
I'm sorry, I'm confused, but I'm not against it.
So you would, you would say no?
No.
You're against the motion?
No.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
No.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
No.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
No.
So I have questions because I don't, I don't understand what just happened.
It's plurality, yeah. You've been approved.
Oh, great.
No means you're approved.
No means yes.
Yes, in this case.
No means yes, yes means no, got it.
Let's have an affirmative vote to approve it by the four people at least.
Sure, those, those four, would you call the same four again, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Andrews?
This would be for an affirmative vote for approval.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. I think that clears things up nicely, I'm glad you did that.
Thank you.
You've been approved, make sure if there are any, do you need any further permits from the township?
You're going to need, I believe, permits for the sheetrock inside of it, so if you want to call my office tomorrow morning, or if you want to come visit, we can discuss further. Yes.
Look on the bright side. It's been approved. Okay, thank you for appearing before the board.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, next matter is fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four Z, it's Eric Savvy. This is the R nine zone, medium-high-density residential, it's block two six zero zero one lot two one point one three, physical location on this is fifty-one Shirley Boulevard, requiring C variance. Applicant proposes a rear yard deck twelve inches from the side yard line where twenty-three is required.
Mr. Savvy?
Sir? I'm sorry, did I say twelve inches? It's twelve feet, yeah. He was testing you.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, so I hope you got it?
I will.
Give us your full name, spell your last.
Eric with a K, Bello Savvy, S as in Sam, A, B as in Victor, O.
Thank you.
Are you represented, sir?
Yes, I am.
Counselor, for the record? Yep, push that button on there, sir, thanks. They're directional, so you're going to have to get close. Gentlemen, please feel free to sit.
I used to have a stronger voice in my younger day. My name is Lawrence Appet, and I represent the LLC that Mr. Savvy is the owner of, and the LLC, which I checked today, is in good standing, and he is a member.
What's the name of the LLC, sir?
ELS Properties. ELS Properties.
Thank you.
So yours, counselor?
Maybe I'll, yes, thank you. The who, what, where, how, why? Short answer, looking to replace an existing deck that turns out was twelve feet from the, the property line on fifty-three Shirley Boulevard where twenty-three feet is required. I purchased a house five and a half years ago, just, you know, the, even during the time that went for the temporary CO, inspector pointed out that the deck, you know, there were certain beams and, and areas that needed repair. There was never any mention that, that there wasn't a variance with respect to the deck. When I went to replace it, because it was in poor condition, did file a permit, and turns out that the permit then was declined, and I was surprised, and was informed that it was declined because there was no record of a variance having been issued at that time. All I'm doing is, it's essentially the same footprint of the existing deck. That deck had been there at least fifteen years. So that, that's the short story to why I'm here today, just seeking that variance.
So yours to prosecute, counselor?
Yes. You requested that I make an Oprah request of the town to find out whether this deck was originally constructed there, is that right?
Yep.
I have a copy, I can move into evidence of the response. Apparently, there's, the town does not have any records, the original building permits, and the, I've been out there myself, and we're talking about an old deck, it needs to be done, and it looks to be as if it was probably part of the original construction. And since the town has no records anymore, this goes back to the nineteen seventies, that's a good decade, they, they don't have the records, so it's, it's difficult to ascertain after, was it thirty years, forty years? I was young then. Acertain what was the original application, because you don't have the records. So you can only assume that it was built that way, and it's been that way for forty years or so. And I think that as a result of that, the, it needs to be redone, obviously, after all these years, and it's not going to be, it's have a, I mean, I wouldn't walk on it right now, but it needs to be done. And, and that's what Mr. Savvy wants to do, I need to like permission to, to rebuild the deck so it's safe, it's second floor, and also to move the stairs to the deck from the downstairs from the left side, which is closer to the sideline, to the right side, which is, which is, meets the requirements.
If I may add, that's the only material change, the exact footprint of the, the deck is similar to what was there for, as, as far as I'm aware, at least fifteen-plus years, but.
Counselor, you putting something into, into evidence?
Yes.
Give it to Mr. Dusty, okay?
It's right there.
Chairman, I'm marking as A one what appears to have been a, an Oprah request dated ten nine of twenty-four. Thank you. From Mr. Abbott's office, asking for, for this property, the original building application, building permit, building, any other building permits, and an application to build the rear deck at the rear of the property, as well as some other open, open permits, et cetera. And Mr. Abbott, you represented that the town sold you the rent on?
It's on there in the second page.
Oh, yeah, number seven, no records responsive to this request.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hollahan?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so Mr. Savvy had filed an application with my office back in September of twenty twenty-four to replace the existing deck. Me and Savvy, me and Mr. Savvy worked together on this a little bit. Based on the lack of records that I found in, in the history, that, or the, the lack of history that I was able to dig up, my inclination was that the deck that was existing there that he was looking to replace was constructed without permit, so due to the height of the deck, with this being in the R six zone, obviously, the height determines the setback of the deck. So at a ten-foot-high deck, where he is proposing sixteen point four feet from the property line, he's required twenty-three feet minimum. I don't know if I agree that the house was built with the deck, I have looked up some aerial images of Shirley Boulevard, usually if one house is built with the deck, they're all built with the deck. Some houses do, some houses don't, some have different sized decks, different location along the rear of the house. I would comfortably say that the existing deck was constructed without permits, so Mr. Savvy is here trying to replace that deck and seek that side yard variance relief, so.
Would you speak to the moving the stairway?
Yes, so the existing deck shows the stairway along the rear building line, and Mr. Savvy is proposing to relocate that stairway along the left side of the deck, closer to the left side property line.
And that in effect is the problem, right?
Not necessarily, no.
Could the stairway go on the other side? Or was it originally on the other side?
The stairway, if you look, is along the rear yard.
Yep.
I'm sorry, the rear building line with the, give me one sec.
If I can maybe interject for a second, the, the edge of the deck was flush with the edge of the house, which was about sixteen feet, so it was already in violation of the required setback. And then the only change is, again, aesthetically and functionally, to have the stairs rather than running, you know, underneath the house alongside.
I think, Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, if he relocated the steps to the original position, he would still require variance relief.
That I understand, I just wanted to see, he's exacerbating it even more by.
Correct, yep.
That's why I was curious, what purpose does it serve putting him over there?
The purpose is, again, it's a very long deck, it was, I mean, staircase that was running right alongside of the edge, it intersected, again, the way it was done with the, with the doorway leading to the back, so it wasn't an efficient layout.
Why does the, why does the proposed?
They're directional, sir, you pull it forward towards you.
Mr. Zoning official, why does the, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Danny.
Hollahan.
Hollahan.
Why does the proposed steps, do steps violate a sideline?
So when I measure the setback, he, my denial letter references sixteen feet four inch, so when I measure the setback of a deck, I don't measure the stairs, I measure it to the closest point, the walking surface of the deck minus the stairs. So it's actually a little bit closer to the stairs, less than sixteen feet four inches, so the setback is measured from the walking surface of the deck structure, not necessarily the stairs.
So the stairs are not the problem?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Anything else you want to tell us? Let's see if we have any questions from the board. On my left, questions from the. Let's see if we have any questions from the board. On my left, questions for the attorney or the applicant?
Yeah, I, I do. Why can't you move the deck over? You have it right flush to the corner of the house. If you just move your deck over and shorten the stairs.
It would cause a hardship, because there's a door leading from the second floor on the left-hand side of the, uh, the house.
What kind, a door?
Sliding door to go out to the deck. So if you move it over, I think that's the issue, to be flush with the house. According to the rules, that's what's driving the setback, but the door is near the left-hand side of, of that deck, so moving it over, I'd have to close up that door, open up a brand-new siding door, so it's just an added hardship.
Where is the door?
Yeah, I'm lost. The door is on the...
On the biggest bulk part of the deck, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
But it could be done.
It's an economic hardship, and again, I'm just asking for relief here for something that I didn't do. That, the house was an eyesore, um, including that backyard deck, and, uh, you know, I put quite a bit of money into, you know, the front to make it, uh, more aesthetic to, uh, the existing neighbors' property line. The neighbor who is next to us, uh, 53 Shirley Boulevard, besides, you know, friends with him, never had an issue with that existing deck, doesn't have a problem with the, um, the application, so he's really the only person that would be impacted, uh, and, and he hasn't lodged a, uh, an issue unless he's on, on the line, but...
Do you live here, at this address?
So, no longer, my son will be living there.
It's an LLC.
Yeah, no, that's why I was just curious. And then, um, so you feel it's the board's responsibility to just grant a variance for a non-conforming deck and just keep it non-conforming? Is that what you're asking for?
Well, I hate to take legal positions, because...
No, it's okay. I'm just asking.
Sometimes I'm actually correct. Um, since I made the Oprah request, and since it would seem to me, the obligation of the town is to have these, uh, plans before the house was built, I mean, it wasn't built 1800s, it was built in 1970s, where are the plans? And therefore, I would think that the, uh, decision has to come down to, there's a burden on the town to prove that it wasn't, that, that it was, wasn't built that way. They should have, we have no control over those plans.
But when you buy a property, isn't it buyer beware and check into everything?
Yeah. Yeah, and there, there was. There was no, there, there was no plans when he bought the property, and when I did my Oprah request, it shows as, as there, that they don't have the plans. So we don't know when the deck was built. We can only assume that it was built when the house was built, and because there's a door going out to the deck, it makes more sense that the, that the, uh, uh, that the deck was there when they originally, you know, when they originally built the house. Um...
And maybe the other thing I would add is, so, you know, as a condition, obviously, the closing was the issuance of a CO, and during that application process, the town inspector did come out, and there was no mention of the deck being in violation. Um, the only thing that was pointed out, that there were certain aspects of that deck, um, some of the steps, some of the, um, the columns, that was in a poor enough condition that was asked to make those, uh, repairs, which were made temporarily, and now this is the, you know, a couple years later, uh, to do the full replacement.
I don't know that when you get a CO, that they're doing calculations for zoning requirements.
CO inspections really are for life safety inspections. They're not checking if a deck or shed or other structures have permits.
Right. That's, that was my understanding as well, Counselor. So it's not, that's, I don't think that gets passed back to the town, but that's for debate. Uh, let me ask you a question. Do you have any other pictures that can, show me where this back door is, this sliding door?
I don't have the pictures.
Well, could you point it out on the survey here? Whereabouts?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's right around where the...
You want me to go there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you both. Uh, let me ask you a question. Why don't you build it in reverse? Then we wouldn't have a setback issue.
Well, it could rip the whole house down too, but, you know, the real, the real question...
Why would he have to rip the house down? He's building a deck.
I'm saying what we could do. We could rip the whole house down and, and, and put up a new one, but the point of it is, is that there's nothing of record to show that this was not approved at the time the house was built. And that is the, uh, requirement of the town. That's why we have, that's why we have plans, and that's why we have, uh, building permits.
You can ask any question you want.
To move forward, instead of working backwards, if you want to erect the deck, he has to follow a certain criteria, a rule?
Correct. And like, like I said earlier in my testimony, my position is, there are no records for the deck plans, because a permit was never filed for the deck. That's at least my position that I've taken.
So let me, let me add, if I may, Chairman. Um, so there is an added hardship here. Well, I'm, I'm gonna make two, two points. First off, the only property owner that this would impact is 53 Shirley, and that deck has been there for 15-plus years, uh, never had an issue with it. He knows that it's being replaced, was okay with it. The additional hardship is, I'm trying to do everything by the book, so the, the contractor that started, actually started, started the demolition and the initial, initial installation of the deck, and again, the same footprint of the existing. So if I'm being asked to reorient, I'm out of pocket. I mean, so when I found out and asked about whether the permit, I guess the contractor assumed that the permit was going to be approved and started the construction, and then, you know, it turned out to be rejected. So I would ask that the council consider that additional hardship. My closing argument, again, is, all I'm doing is replacing the existing deck, same dimensions. It only affects that one property owner who's been there that whole time and hasn't raised an issue.
Sir, are you taking it down to the ground, the old one?
What's that?
You're taking it to the ground?
Demolished, yep.
Okay, why wouldn't you turn it around?
They already started the construction, I suppose, uh...
Let me ask Mr. Hollihan. Was it construct, were you at the property, at the property?
I've never been at the property, no.
Yeah. Well, so when was your ruling issued, and when did this, when did this construction start?
Can I ask, why would it need to be reoriented? I'm gonna run into the same...
Because we mitigate the var, the variance.
No, I think I'm gonna have an issue on the other side, given that, that property line, that, because the edge of the house is also in, within 12, 16 feet.
Sir, this, you're an LLC, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you own this home, probably others?
This is the only other one in my own, my own personal. So, do you want the full story?
No, you don't have to put anything on the record you don't want to, sir. I'm not, I'm not getting...
It wasn't meant for a business, but it was, um, basically, my granddaughters had lived there, and they were moving out, they were gonna lose the house, and I bought the house.
I'm trying to help you to get it passed.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that.
So...
I'm just asking for, again, just...
I get it, but...
Consideration whereas...
You need a plurality of votes.
Yep, I understand.
And I don't know if you're gonna get that right now.
Right.
So, that'll be you rolling the dice, and if you lose, you're gonna wind up changing it anyway. You're gonna have to change it. So I'm just giving you a fair warning, and your counsel will, will tell, counselor will tell you the same thing, because if you lose on the vote...
And, and what I ask for all the council members to consider, again, is...
We're, we're just board members, zoning board members, we're not council.
That, that deck has been there forever. I'm trying to go by the book. It only impacts that one homeowner. That homeowner hasn't had an issue.
That homeowner may not be there forever. Some other homeowner may move it. Let me, Mr., Mr., yeah, Mr. Dasty? I'm sorry?
He was mentioning proof of burden on the town. I'm kinda curious.
There's no burden on the town in terms of not, not having a permit.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
No, he's right. You've, you've done the right thing. You've rectified this, where you, where you're trying to do it legal, whether there was one in the past or not, prior to your ownership. You say you bought it five years ago?
Five and a half years ago.
Five and a half years ago. And then, we went back 15 years, and your counselor said something about 40 years, there's no records.
Well, I know, I guess how I'm saying, I know from the, the prior, um, neighbor, I think he's been there since 2006, so the deck was already there. And, and my granddaughters and their mother had been there. She grew up in that house, so I think they bought it in the early 70s, so it's been there.
I understand that, and, and at this point, you still need a variance.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I know you've done the right thing, but you're still gonna have to get the votes from the board. I'm just trying to advise you as best as I can. Questions on my left anymore? None?
Just to clarify, this is demolished, and you're re-erecting the whole deck.
Brand new. But it had, the contractor had already started, and so it would be an added hardship. And again, I'm trying to do the right thing, where some people will just replace the deck or whatever, and I was surprised that, after, and I wasn't aware that when you get a temporary certificate of occupancy, and an inspector comes and points out just certain flaws with the actual condition, but assume that, again, the deck was, you know, all proper variances, so I would ask that that be, um, considered as well.
Well, I don't know that we're gonna consider anything that an inspector said, because we can't prove or disprove that. He may have been a nice guy and said, "By the way, you're looking at some problems here with the wood," but he certainly wasn't qualified, probably, as a zoning officer. He doesn't have the certifications that Mr. Hollihan would have. So, while I understand you may have been misled, that's, that was of your own doing, and certainly not part of the township's fault. By the way, I do have a
copy of the temporary CO.
We don't doubt that that happened.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody...
Patrick Reardon Construction.
Do you have anything for, I'm, I'm gonna move on. I'm gonna go to a public portion very soon.
Yeah. Um, I know you wanna go by the book, but you knew ahead of time that the deck did not, there were no papers for the deck, and you went on just with the idea of replacing with the same footprint. And that's, that's very, very different than buying it with the deck and fixing the deck.
We assumed...
Now you're cleaning down the deck, and you're putting up a new one, but you want to stay in the same footprint when there was no permit, as far as we know. There's no proof that there was anything there.
But there's no, I guess our point...
So it's going by the book. Why the book would be, you would go by what the, uh, the side yard would be.
I think what my attorney is saying, the assumption was, when we ran all the checks and had the temporary CO, that the deck was always there. I think that's the issue.
When did you do the report where you found that there were no permits ever permitted?
I think even on the initial purchase of the house.
How far advanced of, of when you started the construction?
Before.
It appears to be, the Oprah request is dated 10/9/24.
And, and you had the house, but when?
Back in 2019.
And when did you decide to redo?
At the time we filed the permit.
But then you knew, you knew about this before you, you started...
No, so I filed for the permit, but then when the permit was rejected, that's when I found out that it wasn't in variance with the proper setback.
And was the construction going on when you found that out, when you were rejected by the firm?
I was not unaware that the contractor had started after filing the permit, and that there was a lot, time lag. And then I immediately put a stop to it, consulted with Mr. Hollihan about next potential steps, and, and that's why I'm here.
You know, I don't have any problem dealing with the, the matter at hand. What happened in the past really is incidental. You've tried to do the right thing by coming and applying for one, but you've also found out that you need a variance. So in doing so, you, now you've exacerbated it, and, and again, it's probably gonna be the same way on the other side. You're saying, "I don't know," without asking Dan to do the math on that. Um, and we sit here...
We're talking about a couple feet for the stairs in addition to the existing...
You understand that. You would think you would have control over your contractor. Why would you let him start?
I...
I mean, that's, that's a rhetorical question. I don't, I don't expect you to answer, but you have control over your contractor, not the contractor controls you. In any event, uh, I'm gonna go to a public portion. If you need time to speak with your counselor about whether you want to call for a vote tonight, I would suggest you do so, only because I have a feeling that you may not have enough votes tonight. I'm merely suggesting. And Counselor, you take that under advisement with your, with, with your client. Uh, let me go to a public portion first, okay?
Mr. Savvy, let me just, or, excuse me, Chairman. Mr. Savvy, are you replacing the deck because it's dangerous, or...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And did I hear you say that the elevation is changing?
No.
Uh, same elevation?
Everything's the same, except just reorienting the stairs, so it's a couple additional feet.
Okay. And you applied to the town to get this deck approved? And when you did that, what did you submit to the town to get a new...
Township plans, the records, and then it got rejected because Mr. Hollihan noticed that the existing, even the existing deck wasn't, you know, in the proper setback, and then we did all the checks. There's no record of a, you know, variance.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll go to public portion. This is 58, uh, 2024Z. The physical location of this is 51, uh, Shirley Boulevard. It's seeking variance for, uh, rear yard deck 12-foot from the side yard, uh, side yard property line, where 23 required. Anyone want to speak on this matter? Please stand or raise your hand. No one has? I'll close the public portion. I really don't know what to tell you. I have no more comments. I've asked you if you could reorient it, and perhaps, I, I, I'm not capable of doing the math on it. I don't know if it would even change anything. Mr. Hollihan would maybe know that, but that's really for you and an engineer to figure out. Um, I'll leave it at that. I'll ask if there's any final comments before, if you want to call for a vote this evening. Anybody on my left want to make any final comments?
No.
None? Ms. Andrews, none? Counselor?
No.
All right, would you, would you like a brief moment to...
Well, I would like to make one final comment.
Sure, go ahead.
And to address a question you asked, whether it's an investment property. The intention wasn't to be investment property. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, I'm saying it's gonna be hardship, and I don't want the, uh, board to think, "Well, what kind of hardship is it, this is a guy that buys and flips homes?" I purchased the home because my granddaughters were living there. Their, their other grandfather, who owned the house, had passed away. House went into foreclosure, so I purchased so that I don't have to move out of the old bridge school system. So I'm not doing, so it will be a hardship. I'm not doing this, this is in the business where I'm flipping, and so if you think, "Oh, so what for him? He can just tear it down and build another one." That was never the intention why I bought the house. I just would like to leave you with that.
Oh, I understand that, and it's admirable what you're doing, and I don't think that the board took that in. I'm merely saying that as a LLC, you have...
It was just reliability protection.
And, and again, you may do it for whatever purposes, and, and that's private, that's, and I don't think that comes into play, to tell you the truth. You, you do, I said, you're doing the right thing. You came forward. You found out there was never a, a permit review, ever. Uh, whether or not the records are lost, it's incidental to me, in my opinion. Uh, you're here for a new, my, you're starting over, in my mind. So we'll, we'll see what happens, but if you'd like to, if you ask me to call for a vote, it's gonna be final tonight. So if you'd like to step outside for a moment and talk about it, I'll, I'll give you a brief few minutes, okay? Let's go off the record. Uh, we'll take a quick two or three-minute recess, please.
Thank you.
Ready to proceed?
We came back from that brief reassess. We allowed the client, please.
His client and, uh, himself to step outside and discuss the matter. Uh, I'll need a roll call, please, uh, Ms. Porcelli.
Sure. Mrs. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier?
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
I am also here. We're dealing with matter 58-2024Z, the location 51 Shirley Boulevard. We had a public portion, we closed. We briefly recessed in order for the applicant to speak with his attorney. Counselor, are you speaking on behalf of your client?
Yes, we'll call for a vote.
Call for a vote? Okay. Board, this would be C1, right? This is C1 variance. Someone interested in moving it, please say so.
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Moved in second for approval. Roll call. I'm sorry?
The motion was to approve the variance.
Yes, to approve. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Hold on, is there?
You said move it. What did you mean, to move it to affirm or deny it?
Deny.
Oh, I didn't hear you say that.
Sorry.
Okay.
Move, I-
Hold on.
Did to deny.
Start all over.
Let's, let's restart here. What I'm gonna do is call for a motion. The motion can be to, for approval, or it can be for denial. Would someone like to make a motion?
Chevalier, I'll make a motion to deny.
Is there a second to deny?
Andrews, second.
Okay, once again, board members, a yes vote means to deny, a no vote means you don't want to deny, okay? And then we'll go, if, if we need to, we'll take another vote for affirmative action, for affirmative motion, if needed.
Yes.
So it's, it's yes to deny. And please say it in those words, so you're clear. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Izzo?
I'm gonna say yes to deny with, in regards to, we're starting this from scratch. I could see no reason why it can't be done correct. So, yes to deny.
Okay. Mr. Scogno?
Yes to deny.
Mr. Stoner?
No.
Mr. Singh?
Yes to deny.
Chairman Sullivan?
I'm gonna have to agree. I think it's the time that you have the opportunity to correct it, and you haven't taken that opportunity. I would've thought perhaps you wouldn't have taken the roll call vote tonight, but I'm also gonna have to say yes to deny. I'm sorry, but this has failed, the application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Savvy.
Well, appreciate it.
All right, sir.
All I've been doing is for 58 years. I've got two more years to hang in.
All right, we have one more application, board. 59-2024Z, Derek Fortin. This is R7 Medium High Density Residential. This is block 26027, lot 78.14. Physical location is 164 Boston Avenue. Applicant proposes a second driveway. Sir?
Good evening.
You are?
Derek Fortin.
Would you have a, you can sit down, sir, because we need to pick up your voice on that. And as, as you have seen, the board attorney's gonna swear you in.
Yes, sir.
Sir, do you swear to tell the whole truth so help you God?
Yes.
And would you give us your full name, spell your last?
Derek Fortin. F-O-R-T-I-N.
All right, Mr. Fortin, the same applies. You're not represented by anyone, correct?
Correct.
You have any other witnesses this evening?
No.
Do you have any pictures or anything else that you'd like to show the board as exhibits?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So it's the who, what, when, where, why? And you can start off whenever you want, sir.
So I'd like to do a second curb cut on Austin Avenue, and I'm doing the variance because I don't have 200 feet of linear property front. So I need board approval to do the second curb cut. The reason for the second curb cut, I plan on making my basement into a second unit, turning my single-family home into a two-family home. The reason for the driveway is going to be for safety. I don't want to see anybody parking on the street and walking any farther than they have to do in snow or rain, and then also for snow removal to keep additional cars off the street.
Okay, anything else you want to tell us at this point? I would just have one question.
Sure.
You've applied for making your home a two-family?
I haven't applied for permits or anything yet. I just want to see if I could do, if this was acceptable. I do know that I'm in, I am in an R7, so I know that it's, I don't need a variance to do a two-family home in that area.
That's correct, if you guys will, yes.
Okay. Board members, questions on my left?
The driveway now, is it cemented?
So the original driveway on the right side of the picture is all existing concrete. So the new driveway is going to be on the left side of the survey in red. So the second entrance would be on the, that side of the house. So if I don't do that, and it's a two-family house, potentially people would have to walk much, much farther all the way around the house, you know, to enter your apartment, so to speak.
So you're now using that as a driveway, aren't you? Don't you have cars in that area?
I have cars on the right side of the survey-
Yes.
-in the existing concrete driveway. I'm proposing on the left side a curb cut for a new stone driveway.
The driveway to the garage, right?
Yes.
And be, to the right of that, don't you have another cement pad there?
There is enough there to get a couple of cars, but again, like I said-
So you already made the cement pad for, to get, to get to the back?
There is an existing cement pad for the existing house that's there, yes. It's nothing new.
No. Did you have the cement put in afterwards?
No. This is brand-new construction. We built this house and started in 2007. The CO was in 2013. Everything you see here in black is existing up to today's date from the original plans dated 2007. So the concrete is existing from the original construction.
So the concrete to the, to the garage is fine, but to the right of that, don't you have, who put that in?
The original contractor in 200-
He put a cement slab?
Yes, correct.
Going all the way back?
Yes, correct.
And so you want to turn the front of that, which is gravel now, you want to add?
No.
No.
No. The other side of the house.
Yes.
The other side of the house.
Yeah. If you reference the drawing, where the red marker is, it's completely, it's 80 feet away. It's 80 feet on the opposite property line.
Okay, I was looking at the right side of the house.
Right, that's existing. So I need a curb cut on the right side of the drawing, where the red ink is. Sorry, left side of the drawing. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Let's get some clarification from, from Mr. Holligan. Dan?
Thank you. Yes, so the applicant is here tonight seeking a design waiver for a second, essentially point of access, or a second driveway to an existing residential lot. Our ordinance permits two access points, aside from a circular driveway on residential lots, granted that they have at least 200 linear feet of frontage along a roadway. Because this lot has 104 feet, which is less than the 200 feet, then he needs a design waiver for the second driveway. Should the applicant move forward with converting the basement into a two-family house, he's going to need additional parking anyway. Our ordinance requires at least 1.5, we round up to two parking spaces per dwelling unit. His driveway being under 30 feet, the existing one on the right, is only sufficient for two parking, for two vehicles. So he would either need to get a design waiver to extend the existing driveway, because then it would have to be at least 40 feet in width, or get a design waiver to install a second driveway. So just to sum it up, it would be a design waiver for the installation of a second driveway.
What would this be, a C variance instead of a design waiver? It's a new driveway. It's not-
So the driveway is part of the design standard. So with driveway setbacks and driveways, we've treated them more recently as design waivers rather than-
We have, yeah, we have, but it was, it was lot line, like, is the proposal on this zero?
No, five feet. So he's, he's proposing a consistent setback with the ordinance.
Okay.
The, the only thing that he needs relief from the board for is that second point of access, because he doesn't have the 200 linear feet of frontage.
Is there a garage?
On the left side of the house, not that I'm aware of. Mr. Fort-
Is there a garage on the right side?
Yes.
On the right side, yes.
Well, then doesn't he, is it a one-car garage?
Um, I believe-
It's a two-car garage.
Yes, you are. Okay.
Well, then he has room for four-
It's on.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Then he has room for, thank you, sorry. He has room for four cars.
So actually, no, because the driveway pulls into the garage, so that garage would be only for the upstairs unit. You can't, you can't block that garage with other cars.
I'm not, Counsel, I'm not sure of the width of the driveway. I've done, somewhere I would say between 25 and 30 feet. So anything over 20 feet could accommodate two vehicles, plus the two in the driveway. So yes, I would agree that he could potentially have enough parking for four vehicles.
How deep were you planning on putting this back? Almost to the house?
Yes, I planned on putting stone from the curb almost to the house, to give you room to put two cars, one in front of the other, and side by side.
So Chairman, the width of the proposed driveway is 20 feet, and then the depth of it, or the length of it, is 29.27 feet.
Correct.
I've visited your house. It's got great curb appeal. It's not going to anymore if you do this.
I understand that.
And that's just a comment and opinion. I don't know why you would want, want to ruin that. And I don't know what the necessity would be. Where would the entrance, if you're going to have a basement apartment?
So I'm clearly just doing this for safety and to keep cars off the road for snow removal. The second entrance would be on the top-left backside of the house to get into the basement.
Okay, along, along the same route?
Yes, so-
As you look at the house to the left-
Yeah, as you look at the house to the left, in the red square is the proposed driveway. If you walk, again, you know, if this all goes through, I'm gonna propose, I'm gonna make the unit downstairs, there's gonna be a sidewalk going in that same path between the fence and the house, up to the back of the house. So if you park, you know, in the existing driveway, you would then have to walk all the way 150, 180 feet around the house, the home, to get to your door. So for safety reasons and for parking and to keep cars off the road.
That road is traditionally heavily parked anyway.
Yes, yes, yes.
Questions to the applicant? Thank you. Nope, nope. None? Yes, go ahead.
Do you live there now?
Yes, I do.
And you plan on living there?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
All right. If you don't have anything at this point, I'm gonna go to a public portion. I'll come back to you again. I'm gonna ask you if you want to take, take a vote or rethink it. This is 59-2024Z. The physical location's 164 Austin Ave. We're designing a waiver for a second driveway on the front, front of the property. Anyone here in the courtroom wish to be heard on this matter? Please raise your hand. Stand. No one has? I'll close the public portion. It's back to you for final comments.
I'd like to go to a vote.
You want to take a vote?
Please.
Okay. All right, board, this is, this is design waiver only, you're saying, Counselor? I, I kind of think it's a C, but-
I don't mean to correct the zoning officer, but I, I think it's a variance, but here we are.
Okay. Yeah, I think I worked with Vene on deciding whether or not, but I would side with Counsel, whatever he, he says.
The gentleman has, has noticed for the second driveway. So whether he called it a design waiver or a variance, the public's been noticed about it. I personally think it would be more characterized as a variance, but I don't have an issue unless the Chairman of the Board does, based upon that, if you want to go forward with it now.
Well, I think, I think that when we were using design waivers for driveways, it was, it was a lot of non-compliance with the five-foot setback. And people were, these people bought these homes years ago with single-car driveways, and of course, they expanded as their families expanded, and generationally, we've changed. So I see the need where people made wider driveways. Often, they would put them right to the lot line, not knowing that there was. So we went to design waivers on that, but I don't know that it applies here, and, but I'll take your word for it.
I don't think it's, I think it's a variance, but I don't- Chairman and Counsel, if I may. So we call them design waivers dealing with driveway setbacks, because it violates the design standard section of our code, as does this. So that's why we typically call driveway setbacks, we typically call them variances. Previous Counsel said that was incorrect. We should be calling them design waivers. So this falls within the same section of the code as the driveway setbacks, so we've called them design waivers.
I don't know, getting a curb cut onto, onto municipal roadway, I think that's, that's a form, form of proof than just that you are, you're on the lot line of your neighbor.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion. But if, if you're advising us to go with a design waiver, if it's okay with Counsel, our Counsel, I'm good with it. You're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll handle it as a design waiver. Go ahead.
Is this an LLC?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
No, if it was LLC, he'd have to be represented.
Okay.
Anything else? Everybody good? All right.
Not in HOA area, your home, no.
No, no.
If someone is interested in moving, this is for a design waiver for a second driveway, for a second curb cut and driveway on the property. 200-foot required where that's not available. Anyone interested in moving this for approval or for denial?
Izzo, move for approval.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it. Stoner.
Roll call, please, for approval.
Mrs. Andrews?
No.
Ms. Chevalier?
No.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
No.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
No.
Chairman Sullivan?
Uh, I'm gonna have to stick with the board. I, I don't believe that really this is necessary, and I'm sorry, but my, my vote is, my vote is no. Thank you for appearing before the board, sir. We appreciate it. All right, board, that was our final application for the evening. General public comments. Folks, are you here for any comments? No? Well, hold on, if you want to speak, you have to come up, sir.
I get the impression, sir, do you have something to say about the application we just voted on?
Yes.
Well, it's a little late now.
Okay. I don't mind you talking. Go ahead. Yeah, well, it doesn't have to be on the record. Well, it is on, everything's on the record. It's an open public meeting, so we have to have everything on the record. Got you. And I understand that you may have a difference of opinion with the board. I just, I do want to remind you, the vote is final. Yes. And, and- Yes. It can't be taken back up again, so we'll certainly listen to you. Who are you, sir?
My name is Michael Fortin.
Okay.
I was actually gonna move in the building down when it was done. I'm Derek's father. And so I'm not sure why the board wouldn't approve a driveway to keep the additional cars off the road, considering the board already knows this road is, already has cars, enough cars on the roadway. That was my only-
Mr. Fortin, I'm gonna recommend that the board not really answer that. I mean, the board members have spoken as to why they don't think it's an appropriate design waiver request. And to ask them now, "Why'd you vote that way?" is a little late. I don't think you should do that, sir.
Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard? Okay. Board members, any general comments you have?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a, a motion for adoption regarding the rules and regulation. I have two items I'd like to speak about. Okay, we'll do one at a time. Adoption to include salute the flag in section- Adoption to include salute to the flag in Section 1:2-4, Order of Business. We have, we have our rules and regulations, we have Order of Business, and a number of things are missing in that Order of Business. And you can call it housekeeping, but there are missing items, such as the adoption for salute to the flag is not there on the opening. We have an adoption I would like for swearing in of professionals. That's not there also, and that should be on the agenda of every meeting. Public portion is not on the, on the, on the Order of Business. So even though I'm making a motion for two of these, there are a number of things that we should address and overlook, and maybe, I'll read off a couple of things here. You've got approval of minutes. Well, we do that. Resolutions, we do that. Motions of adjournment of scheduled cases and other motions. Calendar of unfinished business. Calendar of new business. Communications, reports, adjournment, we do that. There are a number of things missing, and maybe there, maybe some of these have a meaning towards maybe what I'm bringing up, like communications, is that, is that public portion?
Everything has got to be public, of course.
Yeah, but there's no notion on here, you know, rules and regulation. So I just, I'll start off with the salute to the flag. I'd like to make a motion for adoption for that.
Well, it says it on the agenda.
Yes, on the agenda, sir, but it's not in our rules and regulation. And this is public information.
Do I understand, sir, that you want the rules and regs to be modified to indicate salute to the flag and...
And the other one was the swearing in of professionals. This has just recently happened, where we, we should have this on the agenda and also documented.
There was a third one, I thought, also.
The third one, there's nothing there about public portion comments.
That's by MLUL, you have to open all matters, all matters to the public.
Well, I think he's talking, I think he means after all the applications are heard.
Yeah, yeah. And there were a number of things that maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaking one of these, like, like communications. Would you say that's public portion? I don't know. I don't, what I can check off is adjournment, I see that. Calendar of new business, I don't, do we have calendar of new business?
Well, that's your agenda.
New business would be the new application.
Okay, so that's good, that's good. But let's start off with the flag and the, and the swearing in of professionals, which is most important to me. And that's in Section 1:2-4, Order of Business, in the Rules and Regulations.
The last matter I know came up as a result of a court ruling. I believe that there was a challenge to an application, and the challenge was that the professionals weren't swearing.
Okay.
And since then, we've sworn the professionals at each and every meeting. And I don't know the court case.
No, 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 I think the comment is that you want those three things in the...
No, no, I understand.
Exactly, exactly.
The genesis of it is that's, that's why it would never have been in, in the Rules and regs. So it was only recent, and I think that's been the last few months.
Yes.
And we could certainly add that, I don't see why not.
Right.
So it's three things.
Yeah, there's the flag, salute to the flag, that's our opening. And then the public portion, I don't see that in here.
You mean general public comments?
General public comments, after the, after the applications. You always ask for somebody to come in. You open it up to the public portion. And, and then the others are just housekeeping things I think we can just talk about.
Go ahead.
Okay, so what do you feel about calendar of unfinished business?
That's probably no different to when, when we have a matter that's got a continuance on it, and when people are here, and I announce that there's not going to be, you know, number 1234 is not going to be heard tonight because of an adjournment, the new date will be. I think that's what it is, but...
You can call it however you want to call it. It would seem to be calendar of unfinished business, there's stuff that was carried, right?
Okay. And communications, what is that?
I guess we could ask Maureen if she has any other communication that's not applicable to the, to the agenda, if you wish.
Okay, Counsel, I thank you very much. If we can just add those three things, then adoption, I'll make a motion to adopt the...
Vote on it, but the exact wording is going to have to be handled by the attorney first, okay?
Okay.
But we can certainly vote on that. And, and I guess when we do say at the end of the meeting, Maureen, is there anything you need to tell the board, whether your next meeting is here, and, you know, are we going to have a special meeting, et cetera, that, I would, I would consider that communication, but we can address that. All right, the motion was for three items to be added to the Rules and Riggs under 1-1, isn't it?
1:2-4, Order of Business.
One would be the salute to the flag.
Correct.
The next one would be swearing in to the professionals, right?
Correct.
And the final one you said would be general public comments.
Right.
To be added to Rules and Regulations meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
We'll take a roll call vote?
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
No, we'll take an individual vote.
So, that's what we're doing? No, I mean, for each item?
No, 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 all three. As a bulk. If you don't want, if you, if you want to exempt something, we'll have a conversation about that.
No, no, I was just...
No, we could do it before we take the vote. Is everybody good with three?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll vote on a three.
We're going to vote on all three?
All three.
Okay. Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, as long as it's legally worded to do, and I'm sure that has to go by the township attorney as well. So Mr. Dastie will advise us on that.
Is this a word document, Maureen? Are you going to have to type that in here? You're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
You'll send me the wording, and then we'll, we will vote on it?
Just voted on it?
We voted on it.
No, I understand that, but you're going to send me the wording for the new rules and regulations?
We're voting on it as long as it's approved by probably Council, the town council, the town attorney, and worded by...
Well, Chairman, these are our rules, these are the zoning board rules and regulations. They need not be approved by, by the town. But I don't think this is a resolution, this is a motion. But I'll do whatever, but I'll send you a letter saying to put those three in or something.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Scogno?
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? All right, well, thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We meet again on?
March 6th.
March 6th.
The eyes of March.
Move for an adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We stand adjourned.